Oh, you should know from that firm. Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt your visiting time. Welcome to Adelaide-McCaff Township with our special meeting. It's Wednesday, October the 8th. We're going to get started right on time because I know there is a Leafs game as well as a Jays game. So, but I also understand that's not the most important thing going on this evening. So, having said that, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof? Okay, seeing none then, we will move right into our delegation and timed events. And the first presentation up is from Venfor Inc. And it's regarding the Adelaide-McCaff proposed wind project. So, Peter, if you want to come up to the mic, you just have to push the button in there at the bottom. And I'll turn this portion of the meeting over to you.
Just a quick sound check, is that audible? Great, thank you. I'd like to say thank you very much and good evening to everybody for coming. We thought about this for some considerable period of time and we're at the ripe moment when the ISO, that's the Independent Electricity System Operator, is about to take bids in what's called Long Term Procurement Number Two. And this is the first window of four years when the independent system operator is going to be seeking additional electricity supplies for the province of Ontario. The driver behind this particular proposed project is a recognition that Ontario is indeed short of electricity on the peak days, particularly in the summer, but we have a great challenge ahead of us. The challenges ahead of us have been brewing for many, many years. And I've seen it through my career in the energy sector. We know that Ontario has reached a point of peak power non-sustainability. We're at the point where we now have to import electricity from the United States in the summertime. We had a number of sort of urgent events this summer when it was hot out. And this is only going to increase because the drivers are a few-fold for the increase. So pardon my back to those who I can't see, in so speaking. The first is this country and the planet is basically moving to electric vehicles. Maybe that's more for the folks in the city than the country, but that's a fact that Ontario is a part of. Second, we've had a real increase in population and that has driven our demand to levels in Ontario we've not seen before. The other driver behind it is we've got technology improvements in air heat pumps. And a lot of people are moving away from fossil fuels or at least sharing their energy needs to electric heat pumps. This is driving Ontario to the point, in addition to all the artificial intelligence demands, which are huge in Ontario, in the Western world, where we're basically by 2050, just 25 years from now, going to have to build enough power to get through three more Torontos in Ontario. And I just put it to you this way in context, if I may, that Ontario basically has built its electricity system the size we've got, about 25,000 megawatts at peak. And it took us about 100 to 125 years to do that. And the ISO is now telling us quite clearly, you know, there's going to be at least a 75% increase in that in 25 years. So this is kind of an unprecedented situation in which Ontario finds itself and Canada finds itself frankly, North America and the Western world. The energy demands on electricity are going to be huge. I don't know how we're all going to meet them. But as a resident of this municipality, the thought behind the project was to say to the municipality, do you want to be a participant? Would you like to be a part? I have a certain understanding of how these things are put together. And if you'd like that, we could proceed. It will be financially viable if it wins in the bid process. And it will work to assist the municipality with some substantial revenue that's available to it. And so it was just that simple idea that caused me to say to the municipality, if you'd like that project, we can bring that forward. And so on my own and with a group of shareholder friends, I did. So just pardon my back, just to look at the slide deck. We put this project together with a view that it would last for about 20 years. And then it would probably come off or it might be renewed. We would be putting a road user agreement in place, which I've reviewed. And I think it's robust and it is substantial. And it ensures that the costs of any of this project are not borne by ratepayers, road users, or the municipality. There will be indeed a community benefit agreement. And our early forecast is it would be about nine and a half million dollars. I have recently witnessed in other municipalities that that number could be considerably higher, depending on the negotiation of that community benefit agreement. But in any event, those are the numbers we came here to the municipality with originally. So maybe we could just move to the next slide. I think I've covered those points. So you may notice just in the top left corner, the 22,000 is around what Ontario actually has that could work in terms of the megawatts today. And the balance that I referred to to get to the 25,000 is what we need to import to get there. I've already spoken to the 75% electricity system expansion. But I would urge all of you who are actually interested in this topic, when you return to your residences, to go on the website for NERC. That's the North American Electricity Reliability Corporation. And see for yourselves what NERC, which is really the Americans and the Canadians are doing with their power systems. And you'll see Ontario in particular is evaluated for where we are and what we've got and where we're short. So I would urge you each to have a look at that. Thank you. Next slide. When you're looking at the NERC website, you'll see this chart, which we had on our Zoom meeting with the municipality. And we also had on the cardboard stands when people were meeting. And what you can see when you study it, again, you'll be able to look at it at home as well or perhaps on your website, Mr. Calvert, if that's posted. You'll be able to study it and realize the shortfall that we're in already. And nobody wants to see our lights, you know, in jeopardy, our operations jeopardized or any kind of emergency situations. We've got to do our part, in my view, whether it's here or in other places. So this is a very important slide for all of us to learn from and appreciate that Ontario is short of power and it's got to come from somewhere. And we can build more natural gas plants and we can create more carbon emissions. That's fine. We can build more nuke plants. That is currently the plan. Absolutely. We need to build more new plants. But we've got a shortfall that we in this municipality could help solve. Next slide. So as I mentioned at my outset of my remarks, there are four windows in what's called LT2. The first one is really going to be for delivery of new power sources for May 1, 2030. And then you can see sequentially 31, 32, and 33. And the hope is to acquire multiple terawatt hours of fresh supply for the province, so we do not run out. And so this is really what this whole thing is about, is to ensure that Ontario has got enough power. And they're doing it through a competitive procurement process to ensure that the lowest costs, the most competitive costs of power are out there. Just as an aside, if it assists anybody here, nuclear power is not cheap. It's expensive. You're looking at least at 16, 18, possibly 20 cents by the time we get it built and it's 15 years away. Except for the SMRs, those are the small modular reactors, which could be sooner. The price tag for that, and I know everybody in this room pays close attention to the dollar signs, the price tag for that, that the province has agreed to is $21 billion for 1,200 megawatts, which is substantial. So, wind is much less expensive. In Alberta, it's three, four, maybe five cents a kilowatt hour. In Ontario, it might be five, six, seven cents a kilowatt hour. A lot cheaper than other sources. So if we're trying to keep a lid on our energy costs, this is actually one of the cheapest ways of doing it. Next slide. Why would we propose a wind development here or in neighboring municipalities? It's because the area is actually a pretty good wind resource. We know up high, the wind is blowing almost all the time. And we know that we're in the region of the Great Lakes and we have good convection here. And the good convection allows us to be sure that we're going to have a reliable source of wind most of the time. So it's a fresh revenue for the municipality if they so choose. It will add to the tax base of the municipality, which may offer relief for us, the residents. We're fortunate that there is a capacity available on the line that goes through Alvinston on the south line. There is enough available connection capacity for a project to connect. So we're fortunate with that. And I've already mentioned the road user agreement and so forth. But, you know, having grown up here a bit, I can say I know there's a lot of talent in this neighborhood and people here are smart. And they understand that these are good jobs and a good opportunity if that's what is wanted. Thank you. Next. Just in terms of the project timelines, should it be selected, should it move ahead? You'd be looking at a COD. That stands for a Commercial Operation Date. So that's when the project would turn on. And that would happen in 2030. So it usually takes about three years to build it. There's a bit of engineering that's got to go on. Let's be upfront, this is a good area as well because we don't need to use pile drivers to build these things. This is a concrete foundation. This is not going to suffer some of the same problems that have happened apparently or otherwise in other areas for that in terms of water issues and wells. This is not going to have that at all in terms of the construction. But you can see there's some preliminary engineering. If you look on the website afterwards, you'll understand the timeframe for the development stage goes on for a couple of years, 18 months at least. And then of course, the final engineering and construction takes us to an in-service date when the province absolutely will need the power as we grow. Next slide, please. So, okay, this, I can't, my eyes can't see that tiny detail, but that's the second of the two. Thank you. And you can see that bottom one does take you right out to the timeframe when you're past the construction and you go into what's called a commissioning period, which doesn't usually last very long. The equipment these days is, as with cars, is better. It's modern, it's technical, it's quieter. And you need fewer of them to get the same number of megawatts, which is really good. So at some point, when the other wind farms that are here already, which have multiple towers, come down, there will be fewer of them, if any. And so this is our window for development. It spreads itself out over a few years. And it will be in conjunction with the municipality and a road user agreement that, as I say, is very thorough. And it's frankly tough on the developer, as it should be, and it protects the public fully. Next slide. The turbine layout shows you a few different things. First of all, in our municipality, surrounded by the green border, there's already an existing number of turbines to the north. So nobody can build anywhere near those for the reasons that they're already there. And if you build a turbine near something that's already there, the turbines that are already there have a priority and you cannot be stealing wind from existing machines. So you have to find a different place to do it where they're reasonably close and proximate to the transmission line. They don't have to be right on it or under it. But they need to be close enough, they can be gathered together and connect. And so that's the location currently where we have them. Those are the blue triangles. We looked all over the municipality. And as you know, because you're all reading the papers like we do, the same thing in Southwest Middlesex and Brooke-Alvinston. And there was a roughly equal number amongst them, 20 approximately in each. All of these have to be what are called micro-sighted. So they'll need geological, technical studies at each location. So this is a proposal. And it's our best shot at what we think probably could work. But it will require the municipality saying yes or no. And it will then require a vigorous provincial review, which takes you through a renewable energy approval or REA process. And the government is very tough on all the wind developers for everything. And the lists are extensive and they will follow. But the way the government has set it up, they want to know before anybody goes too far down the road, is the municipality okay with this project generally? And if it is, the municipality will so say. And if they're not, they'll say, no, they're not. And then everybody, if they say yes, will get on with the bid process. And if they win, then the studies will happen. So that's the order in which the government has set up for this kind of development to occur. Next. Guess that's it. Thank you. I should add, as I wanted to, that since we made the first presentation to you, the public, we do have a prospect that is interested in proceeding with the development. You can look it up as well. The name of the entity is called Capstone Infrastructure. They're a very well-known Canadian company. They have strong roots in Ontario. They have developed a number of projects. I went on their website and I saw in very clearly and to my surprise a little bit, that a couple of the earlier projects that I had worked on for other parties have since been acquired by Capstone. Some gas cogeneration projects and then some wind projects as well, like Erie Shores and others. So that's the party with whom or with which we are having the discussions to proceed if that happens. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peter. I think at this time, just while it's fresh, the presentation, does council have any questions of Peter on his presentation? You will get an opportunity at the end as well if you think of something. Counselor Kingma.
Thank you. Through the mayor to Peter, I really appreciate your presentation. I wonder if you have any insights as to what happened in Chatham-Kent? I thought they had a pretty high community benefits offer. It was higher than originally anticipated. Do you know what happened there?
I don't know what happened there, but some of my colleagues actually tuned into the entire program. And I think there was a sense possibly in that municipality that there were enough and there were some concerns about the pile driving and the water well impacts, which we don't have here because there will be no pile driving here and those kind of impacts should never materialize. But I will notice, and I was surprised, that the number for the community benefit agreement was at $7,000 a megawatt per year. I don't know whether that was indexed or not because I haven't seen those documents. But that was a surprise to me and it was a substantial increase in the revenue that a municipality would get. In the case of this one, roughly it'd be close to the 20 million range for that kind of a project. But that's for trying to work out in the numbers. But it's substantial. It's more than double in a bit what I thought was available.
Counselor Brody.
Through you, Sue, to Peter. So this project here is 20 turbines in Adelaide-McCaff. I know Venfor was looking for a bigger project.
Right.
And Southwest Middlesex and Brooke-Alvinston have said no, correct?
That is correct.
Does that make only a 20 turbine project viable?
Yes. The first project that I did when I entered the wind business was Erie Shores. And that was 99 megawatts, 66 machines, I think is what it was. And it's been fine and running and operating perfectly well. The other one that I did was the Port Dover-Nanticoke project. And it was 104 megawatts and I sold it to Capital Power. And it worked out just fine and it's been running with no problem. So I have a general view that anything over 50 megawatts is worth looking at. And 100 is preferably where you would be to mobilize, to do something, and I'm okay with that. This one should be 120, if there's six megawatt machines. And it's possible it could be seven megawatt machines. That will be determined in time. So it could be, you know, 140 megawatts, could be 120 megawatts. But that would likely be what it is, again, subject to your micro sighting. There may be some turbine locations that don't work. And so, you know, we wanted the number to be above the 100 mark to be sure that it would be worthwhile.
Okay, anybody else before I jump in? Okay, I have a couple of questions, Peter. The one number you threw out was 9.5 million revenue based on the original presentation you gave to council. And that was based on a 17 turbine model. And I see you have 20 on this map. So can you speak to that discrepancy?
Yes, so there were some people that were interested in participating. And we also realized that we needed to move a few turbines around. We could actually squeeze in one or two more and we needed to move away one. One of the locations that we had had a discrepancy in timing on mapping. And so that was unavailable to us actually at the time. We didn't see that. And so at the public meetings, and this is a perfect example of the benefit of a public meeting, the resident was able to draw to our attention that the house had since been built there, since the photograph and the map had been there. So we were able to take that away and move it and relocate it. I don't specifically know what the other two turbines were that got changed. I apologize. But yeah, the number that we felt we could go with was around 20. And it may be less depending on the results of the micro sighting.
Okay, so that was my first question. My second question is, part of the purpose, my understanding was for this evening, was not a review of the materials we've already received, but a more feedback from your perspective, from the public engagement sessions that you had two. You had one virtually and you had one at the Kerwood Fire Hall. So we were looking for a summary of your findings from that evening and I've not seen that here.
Sorry. I thought we had sent some of that to your staff to be able to digest that in full. And I did a mini-report for your staff on that. Just off the top of my head, I recall it was a decent attendance at the meeting. We had a meeting at the Kerwood Fire Hall. And I think there were some 40 or so people who attended to that. And then some people signed in essentially offering a comment. Some people didn't sign in at all. We observed that. We did that count at the front end. And it was a very quiet evening. A number of people asked good questions of all of our staff that were there. And we were quite pleased with the turnout. And then similarly with the Zoom call that we had, it was, I thought, very comfortably done. We had good questions from a number of the public that showed up. There was, you know, some people who liked it, some people who don't like it, other people who didn't comment at all. But it wasn't anything notable that I thought in terms of, you know, passive opposition or anything like that that I observed. It was very well, I think reasonably well-attended and quite civilized.
So I do have another question, actually. So your investor you're saying is Capstone. So are you familiar with other projects that they have?
Yes, they did try for the one and we have, we've actually sold them one in Ontario that will now await the outcome of whatever happens to the MSR world. And there are two others as well that we would be prepared to sell to them. But they did buy the Husky Cardinal CoGen plant. They did buy, which I was involved with doing the natural gas work on years ago. Then they bought the Erie Shores project as well, which is still operating. I think they're, AM or Port Burwell, I think that's where it is. So yeah, those are a couple that I know they do. But they have quite an extensive list of projects in Ontario.
You might be interested to learn that of the 57 we already have, Capstone owns two of those.
Oh, there you go. Thank you.
Just thought I'd educate you a little bit.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, I'm all questioned out. Anybody else? If not, Peter, thanks for your time. We appreciate you coming this evening. Sorry. Next up on our agenda, we have a delegation from Pam McLean and Ashley Field. And if you two ladies would like to come up, you can either have each your own microphone or you can share one. So come on up and we're not going to make you stand and dance. You can sit down when you're talking. So I'll turn this portion of the meeting over to the delegation now.
All right. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Myself, as well as our delegation, represents those in our community that are in opposition to having any more industrial wind turbines or wind turbine projects in the municipality of Adelaide-McCaff. We are all quite familiar with the well-published negatives of wind turbines. And we do not want to be party to any of the potential negative effects from them. And just to reiterate a few, first and foremost, wind power is unreliable, it's invasive, it's expensive, and it's a factor in the loss of good productive farmland. In fact, in Denmark, where turbines have reigned supreme for years, they are now met with public resistance. Also there, the lack of subsidies is actually resulting in zero revenue for investors. There are countless public health concerns with reports of sleep disturbances, noise-related stress, and other adverse effects from flicker and shadows. Property values depreciate and resale values are negatively affected. It's not just the turbines themselves, but it's all that comes with them. Transformer stations, transmission lines, noise receptors, a substation. Just take a drive north on the Kerwood Road. Agricultural operations are at risk, including interference with crop production, livestock behavior, aerial spraying, and loss of productive land use due to setbacks and the access roads. Water resources can be harmed where construction may pose risk to groundwater, aquifers, and private wells. A local geologist involved with the Chatham-Kent situation directed the following statement to other municipalities. Know what you're getting yourself into. There doesn't seem to be any easy way out once these things get built. So you have to be prepared to then suffer the consequences. Environmental ecosystems are at risk through disruption of wildlife habitats and migratory pathways of birds. There are concerns regarding both the carbon and the environmental footprint, the tons, as in the T-O-N-N-E-S tons, of cement that are used to stabilize a foundation, the disposal of old blades that presently can only go into landfills, trucking the various parts before and during construction. This cannot be understated. And specific to this situation, Venfor has previously and already stated publicly that they will be selling the company to interested parties. And who are these new potential owners? If so, who is then responsible for honoring the 20-year contracts that were just referred to, as well as the long-term maintenance and disposal post-life? I would like to share a letter here, a testimonial that I have received from a resident in our township. They entered into a contractual agreement back in the early 2010, 2014 with Next Era. And immediately the issues began. If I may read their letter. It says, "To whom it may concern..." Actually, I better need to put these on. "As a former farm property owner of 28727 Brown Road, Kerwood, Ontario, we would like to express some concerns we experienced firsthand after having wind turbines on our own and surrounding farm properties. When we were first introduced to the turbines and their purpose, of course, producing green energy was a step in the right direction. Next Era Energy made it sound like we were investing in the future of clean energy. It was also explained to us that we would be receiving compensation with quarterly checks. Sounds too good to be true? For us, it was. Because we lived on a dead-end street with farming all around us, what was once a beautiful backyard with picturesque scenery became a tunnel of turbines with or without our participation." with or without our participation. Point form is the best way to explain our situation. The choice we were given was that it would be in our best interest to participate because if we didn't, the neighboring farm farm would be, and we would not be compensated in any way. After the turbine was cemented on our property, we were then told we'd have to split the compensation fifty-fifty with our neighbor because the blades, while turning in certain directions, crossed over onto his property. What they don't tell you is that you were only compensated when the turbines are spinning. They also don't tell you how much your property taxes will increase, FYI, hours doubled. They don't tell you that you pay all the property taxes upfront and only after that do they reimburse you. For us, this took a month, but we know for others it's taken a lot longer. If they tell you the wind turbines are silent, they are not. We had eleven in the immediate vicinity and the swoosh sound, for lack of a better word, was very matured. Red blinking lights from those eleven that were in our line of sight made it seem like a lit-up runway. Depending on where the sun was, we continuously had the shadow flicker while eating dinner that was almost nauseating. We had to purchase window shades to block the beautiful evening sun. We would find birds who had been hit by the blades in our field. We saw less and less wildlife on our property where it used to flourish, we also noticed a change in our dog's behavior. They were always agitated and no longer wanted to walk the property. Although when they were first installed, the company tried to keep the disruption of our farmland to a minimum, eventually the land surrounding the turbine was so compacted that yield was lost for almost two years. What they don't tell you is that there is a limited resale of your property. You must have the right buyer who wants to and is willing to contend with the turbine. After a long wait, we found a buyer. We eventually sold our farm and we have moved to an area without any turbines in our view. Scott and Sharon Black, and I thank them for sharing their personal story with us tonight. So on behalf of those present this evening, as well as many others who were unable to attend, our delegation is submitting to you a petition right here, that represents a community that is united in opposition to having any more wind turbines and industrial wind turbine projects in the municipality of Adelaide-Madcap. The signatures on this petition are representative sampling of the whole township. However, contained within this petition are signatures that represent one hundred percent of the neighbors that will be directly and negatively impacted by this project. This petition is a clear mandate from the community that these turbines are not wanted. So we are asking that this petition, as well as any phone calls that have been made, any emails, any letters to councillors or to the township office, be received and kept on file and go on record as a testament to the fact that the community has spoken, that its voice has been heard, and that industrial wind turbines are not wanted here. We are saying no to any further industrial wind turbine projects in our community. And we are saying no to the proposed initial twenty turbines, which will obviously pave the way for more unwanted ones. The community is therefore asking that council vote to declare the municipality of Adelaide-Madcap an unwilling host to industrial wind turbines now and in the future. And to join the approximately one hundred and sixty other Ontario municipalities who have also said no to wind turbine projects and declared themselves unwilling hosts, including all of our surrounding neighbors, Brook Alvinston, Glencoe, and Chatham Kent just this last Monday evening. We would also like to ensure that the declaration as an unwilling host has a longstanding impact into future years and future councils and is not just specific to this Venfor proposal. Therefore, we are also asking that a motion be put forth to make an addendum to the official plan in the form of a bylaw against industrial wind turbines and industrial wind turbine projects. Something that has depth to it and some layer of a protective factor to ensure that this situation doesn't crop up again in the short or long term. Finally, I would like to add. The harnessing of wind power for the local benefit of the community is at the most minimal. Yet we are expected to contend with all the negative consequences that these turbines will bring. The term green energy keeps being touted, yet these projects literally take our green space away, as well as leave a significant carbon and environmental footprint. And that is rather a contradiction in terms, I'd say. One landowner may say yes, but a whole neighborhood is saying no. This proposed project is pitting neighbor against neighbor. Only those few that are in favor will personally profit. Yet their choices are far-reaching and will negatively impact so many others, as is outlined so well in Mr. and Miss, Mr. and Mrs. Black's letter. So to summarize, we are asking that you accept this petition, that the municipality of Adelaide-Madcap declares itself an unwilling host, and also that a motion be put forth with reference to creating a bylaw that prevents any more industrial wind turbines and industrial wind turbine projects from coming to Adelaide-Madcap now and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Pam. Ashley, do you have something to add as well?
I would, thank you, for sure, go ahead. Hello, everyone, my name is Ashley McLean, Pam doesn't know me as Ashley Field. Um, I'm a resident of Adelaide-Madcap. I grew up in this township at the far end of Calvert Drive. I attended the old Metcalf School and I remained here until post-secondary school, when I left to complete undergrad and professional roots. I studied, lived, and worked in the cities for many years, and then I returned here to the country, to Adelaide-Madcap, to live and raise our family with my husband and three little girls as the eighth generation on the family farm. And my story is really no different than so many residents here who have had roots grounded in these agricultural lands for years, who have lived and worked and been so influenced by this rural way of living that we have chosen to return here, to invest here, to purchase homes and farms and raise our generation of children in the way we were raised. Going around the neighborhood these past months, talking about the proposed wind turbine projects here, the concerns have been the same. And Pam has highlighted many of those. But what is so consistently clear from all the neighbors that we live out here in the country for so many reasons and preserving this rural agriculture landscape is all important to us. We sit on our front porch swings as it rains or the sun sets or rises and we see the horizon in the way it is meant to be seen, natural, not covered in wind turbines. We take our kids on walks and bike rides and we point out the wildlife and the birds that are seen flying overhead, not looking up to see wind turbines. We walk the fields to check the crops, to check the cattle and the sheep, and we can shut out the noise of everyday life and hear ourselves think, there's no humming coming from above. We have campfires at night in the pitch dark and we look out to the stars and we can actually see the stars, not flashing lights sitting on top of wind turbines. When the sun sets on our yards, they're covered by the shadows of trees, not the shadows of wind turbines circulating. If you sit there for a second and you shut your eyes, imagine stepping out in the summer at night. The summer just passed, for example. You can hear the coyotes calling, you can hear the crickets and the tree frogs singing and humming. Those are sounds heard, real sounds heard without noise. Sounds that not everyone gets to enjoy, but we do hear. Sounds that we may not even appreciate until they are gone for the humming of wind turbines. We bring home friends and family for long weekends and we drive around showing them this little piece of countryside where we live and they take it all in. As for so many, these views and wildlife are not experienced daily. Just this past weekend, we took our girls walking in the bush, something that is quite regular for us in the fall. And it is so quiet in places like that, that you can literally hear the leaves falling, the walnuts tumbling and squirrels running from tree to tree. One of my childhood best friends and I now live minutes away from each other. Him and his wife and three kids live in the middle of the trees, a place they purchased in Adelaide-Madcap to raise their family and be surrounded by the outdoors. They have short-eared owls that nest on their property secluded amongst the trees. When we looked at this proposed map together, there are four wind turbines mapped between us. What happens to these rare birds when turbines are placed there? And I challenge for anyone opting into these word, wind turbines. Have you ever actually lived or worked outside by them? And by outside, I don't mean in a vehicle or a piece of farm equipment running, but actually walking by a wind turbine in a field while it is rotating. The noise is much more significant than one might think. I would recommend maybe taking a trip to Rosam's Tilbury West Conservation Area near Comber. If you've not been in close proximity to one, this is the perfect place. It's down a gravel road that dead-ends at the branch of the Thames River. There's no traffic there, it should be peaceful. But the only sounds are the womp, womp, womp of the turbines a field away. And this is how it was supposed to be, a conservation area. And wildlife, livestock and pets are all more sensitive to sounds than humans. So while you are there, bring your dog with you and see how they react to the environment. Would you want to live with that or subject your pets and livestock and wildlife to it? If I look at where these wind turbines are planned to go in our area and I step in my yard and I turn around, there would be twelve wind turbines surrounding us and our neighbors. That changes everything I'm speaking about. It changes this rural landscape for several decades or more. And it's not just about this small area near my family. This could be the case in Karen Gorm or Napier or south of Kerwood as well. At this moment, council, you are in control of the decision-making with respect to the wind turbines. Currently, this process is different than it was years ago when the original ones went up. So we're asking you, council, that you follow neighboring municipalities who've, who have declared them municipalities to be unwilling hosts to these industrial wind turbines. We are asking that you have the courage to say no. There was a song out there by a country artist currently that speaks to our life here in the country. "After supper at mom and dad's, swinging in the swing, hand in hand, watching the sun sink out of sight, she said, 'I could get used to this life.'" On a piece of heaven down some country road, there is space out here for us to breathe, to build a home and plant some seeds, sit on the porch and watch our children grow. We are asking that you preserve this area of countryside, that you continue to protect our agricultural lands, our wildlife and ecosystems, so that maybe the next generation continues to want to make this place their home for their families, like myself and so many others. Thank you.
Hey, um, does council have any questions for the delegation? Counselor Kingma?
Through the mayor, I really appreciate your presentation, it was very articulate and very thoughtful. It sounded from Pam that you had a three-point resolution roughly that you want us to consider. One of them was a bylaw? Okay, can, can we? Can we get a comment from staff as to the merits of that?
Okay, I'll let our CIO respond, I didn't know if it would be, I don't think it's covered in the staff report, but he can pick up on it now.
Through the mayor to council and
Sorry, this is our CIO, Morgan Calvert, for those of you that don't know.
The question of a bylaw is a good one and we do need to explore it uh further, to be quite frank. Uh, if council wishes to direct that of staff this evening. Um, there are some cases where uh bylaws can be implemented today and then changed by councils in the future. Uh, there are uh regulations that prevent a council, for example, from tying the hands of the next council. So these are uh legal considerations that we would need to look at before we were able to bring that back to council for their consideration and potential approval.
So does that answer your question? Are you, you, you want to ask on the other two points or you're good?
No, I think I heard what was said, I appreciate the, the comments.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much then for your report, we appreciate you coming out. And um, I appreciate all the community members here tonight too, uh, because um, our job is to listen to you and um, that's all I'm gonna say on that for now. So thank you, you can take your seats again if you'd like. Okay, next up on our agenda, we have the IESO procurement uh wind tarmer, wind turbine and community engagement um, staff report. And I'll turn this portion of the meeting over to our CIO, Morgan Calvert.
Well, thank you, Aaron, through you to council. Uh, the purpose of this report is really just to recognize the comprehensive uh information gathering and community engagement uh process that was designed by the council in conjunction with Venfor Incorporated. It's also just an update, uh, to provide a quick update in terms of the community engagement session and the IESO's procurement process and some timelines and next steps. So by way of background, uh, as the community knows very well, between twenty-fourteen and twenty-sixteen, uh, wind turbines were established in the township uh, through the former Green Energy Act that's been since repealed. Uh, that Green Energy Act at the time removed council's ability to make a decision whether or not uh, a wind turbine proposal could be considered and, and approved in the township. So council really did wear uh, a lot of um the challenges where they just simply didn't have the opportunity to make the decision at that time. Today's context, uh, we have uh, a procurement process put on by the IESO that is essentially giving uh council the ability to uh, determine whether or not it wishes to be a, a willing host or, or otherwise. Uh, back in twenty-fourteen to twenty-sixteen, we didn't enter into a community benefit agreement that, that um had revenues come to the township to, to host a wind turbines. Here, we're looking at a fairly significant uh community benefit agreement opportunity and, and revenues that could fundamentally support uh, the growing tax burden that, that township is facing. Those are just the facts. The point uh that Peter made, uh, Chatham Kent did consider community benefit agreement of almost uh two and a half times of, of what we're seeing here. So if council did uh wish to entertain a municipal sort, uh, municipal support resolution in favor of the application, I would suggest that we go back to the drawing board on what that community benefit agreement and that bottom-line number could look like. Over the last year, we've been working with uh Venfor to provide council the information that it really does need uh to make a good and informed uh decision. Uh, Venfor stated that very early on that, that they also wanted to make sure that council had all of its information, so just to be fair to the, the proponent. Uh, the two public engagement sessions, I participated in both, uh, a number of council were at the in-person one, so you know what I'm saying when I say this. There was significant opposition at those, at that in-person discussion with regard to hosting wind turbines. The virtual session, uh, although it was probably structured a little differently, it was hard to understand or yeah, it was hard to understand public sentiment on, in terms of whether they wanted to be a host or not to a wind turbine company because it was uh more of a presentation style and a question-answer kind of period, so uh, statements weren't made, they were more about who, what, where, when, and how. So on the surface, uh, and in the report, council has several options, uh, from declaring itself a willing host, an unwilling host, or expressing openness to other renewable energy projects like solar. If council wishes to support this proposal, staff would finalize and submit the required municipal support resolution and then continue to review and finalize and work with council on what the, the road use agreement and the community benefit agreement would look like as part of that package. So at this stage, uh, this staff report is, is simply just a, a summary of the comprehensive process that, that council has undertaken uh, and uh, to be received for information and discussion purposes.
Hey, thank you, Morgan. Counselors, do you have any questions for Morgan on the report? Seeing none then, could I, uh, we have a recommendation that council receive this report for information and discussion purposes, could I have a mover and a seconder? Move by Counselor Brody, seconded by Counselor Campbell, all in favor, and that's carried. Okay, so I'd like to open the floor up to council to discuss uh what you'd like to do. Don't everybody jump in at once. I could say something, but I have to talk last, so. Counselor Kingma, go ahead.
Thank you, if it pleases the mayor, I'll put a motion on the floor and we can have a chat. Yep.
What is that motion?
I motion that the council of Adelaide Metcalf withhold a municipal support resolution for any industrial wind turbine proposal subject to provincial directives. And secondly, that the township of Adelaide Metcalf declare itself an unwilling host for any new wind energy generation facilities within its boundaries.
Okay, so do we have a seconder for that? Counselor McKinnon? Discussion? Counsel? Sorry.
Yeah, certainly I'd be supportive of that motion, specifically with the fact that we've gone through the process, and I still knew in figuring out where this is. You know, but certainly my concerns would be raised just in terms of what that impact would be. You know, with the neighbors that they've spoken, but obviously with municipality in terms of community benefit agreements that maybe, you know, aren't going to be as high as they could have been. And certainly with road impacts. I think overall, you know, it's something that seeing the detailed explanation of this, I don't see how any circumstance this would be in our benefit even in the future.
Okay, anybody else? Counselor McKinnon?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment that I thought the C A O's report was done really extremely well. He showed both the pros and the cons. And I especially liked the recommendation of, or the item number six, which didn't preclude looking at solar afterwards.
Okay, anybody else? Counselor Brody?
I'd just like to thank both sides for the work that they've done. Venfor Inc., they did bring this proposal to us. I know it's not very popular for some, but it is reality that the provinces, or maybe even the federal government's putting us into. I feel I feel that the province, if it's the province or the federal government, are mandating electric things that is not sustainable, obviously. So they're mandating E V cars, more, all this other stuff. Well, power has to come from somewhere, but they seem to be pushing all this on all of us. So I don't like that. I don't like the part of the wind towers taken away from agricultural land at all. I do think there's other things that can be done, so for that, I want to support Garrett's motion.
Okay. The only thing I want to add is we're always looking for alternative revenue streams here in the municipality. And we, in this process here, I'm very proud of the staff and council for following a process, not sharing whatever you thought your public, your personal opinion was out in the public, like some of our neighboring municipalities did. So I really appreciate that. And the only comment I'd have, in the Venfor presentation, the expression was doing our part. And I'd just like to say that Adelaide Metcalf is doing their part. We currently have 57 turbines here that we don't have a proper agreement, and we're not receiving revenue on. So we already have that risk that we have to mitigate down the road. And that's all I'm going to say on that. That doesn't say I'm for or against it. That's just a factual comment. Okay, so while you guys were talking, I did some chicken scratching, so can I maybe say this might be what you were saying? That the township of Adelaide Metcalf declares the township an unwilling host for any individual, sorry, any industrial wind turbine project, whether captured by the independent electrical, electricity system operators, the I E S O procurement process, or any industrial wind turbine development proposal. And this might be a bit rough, Betty Ann, but and further to put words in your mouth, direct staff to bring alternative green energy proposals such as solar panels to be placed on current township properties. For example, perhaps the decommissioned Callum landfill and the Kerwood wastewater treatment plant and the possible revenue streams from same. Why? Now if Mike can read it. So, no, because I just think it's important that, you know, we are cognizant of the fact that we all have to do our bit for green energy. And like I said, anyone who knows me, I'm a bottom-line person. I'm all about cost recovery. So when you start getting your blue bin increased, and so cost recovery and user pay. But at the end of the day, we have to have a diversified revenue stream too, so. Okay, so if you can go with that, does that, Garrett, are you okay with the way I phrase that? Speak now. That's okay.
We don't need to discuss solar panels.
Okay, all right, so you're not, that was in a friendly amendment, so we won't do that. All right, so, all right, I'll try again. So that the township of Adelaide Metcalf declares the township an unwilling host for any industrial wind turbine project, whether captured by the I E S O's procurement process or any individual, or any industrial wind turbine development proposal, and further direct staff to bring forward alternative green energy proposals to be placed, no, to bring forward alternative green energy proposals and the possible revenue streams from same? Because you've already canceled out the wind, like the turbine, so it's to direct-
If it's okay with council, I would be content just to withhold support for wind generation.
For now, okay.
And discussion beyond that doesn't strike me as vital at this stage.
Okay, all right, so we'll go with just that the township of Adelaide Metcalf declares the township an unwilling host for any industrial wind turbine project, whether captured by the I E S O procurement process, or any industrial wind turbine development proposal. Okay, so Betty Ann, you're good with that? You don't have to be. It's a democracy here. It's whatever. Go ahead.
No, I'm fine with that because we can discuss alternatives at a later date. So I'll stay a seconder.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing that was- Kingma?
Yeah, I just, I'm like the other counselors, I'm really thankful for the, one of the most purest expressions of democracy I've seen around here in a long time. My ears are just ringing from all the comments, and I want to express how satisfying it is to hear from you. And you're really my kind of people, so.
Okay, so I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? And that's carried. Okay, next up are bylaws. We have a recommendation that bylaw 50 of 2025 confirming October 8th, 2025, receive first, second, and third, and final reading. Could I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Kingma, seconded by Counselor Campbell, all in favor, and that's carried. And could I have a motion to adjourn at 6:59 P M? Moved by Counselor Brody, seconded by Counselor McKinnon, all in favor, and that's carried. Thank you. Okay, go Leaves, go, and go Jays, go.